There you go.
All right.
All right. The time is 7:31. I'd like to call this meeting, a regular council meeting of September 24, 2018, to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Dettin.
Here.
Councilor Grabstein.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Saltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
Can I have a motion to excuse the mayor if he let us know in advance?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Corbett.
I move to excuse Mayor Hartwell from this evening's meeting.
Can I get a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Saltis.
Second.
So I have a motion on the table from Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Saltis, to excuse Mayor Hartwell from tonight's meeting. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. All right, so we're starting off tonight with invocation by Councilman Corbett, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able to.
Infinite wisdom, we thank you for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again, receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Moving on, we have Presentation One, Fire Prevention Week Proclamation. Is there a report?
I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Madison Heights is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Madison Heights, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires kill 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Protection Association, whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths occur at home each year, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas Madison Heights residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home, and whereas Madison Heights residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to a designated meeting place, whereas Madison Heights residents who have planned and practiced home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas the city of Madison Heights is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of smoke and fire spread within public and commercially owned buildings, and recommends the regular inspection of buildings through heating, ventilation, air conditioning, fire, and smoke damper systems. Whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, Beware, Fire Can Happen Anywhere," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council does hereby proclaim October the 7th through the 13th of 2018 as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and urges all residents to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and be it further resolved that all residents are encouraged to participate in the many fire safety activities that are going to be held at the Fire Department's open house at Fire Station Two on Saturday, October the 6th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m.
Perfect. Chief, would you receive this resolution or proclamation on behalf of the city?
Good job.
Okay. So moving on in the agenda, public hearings, today we have none, so I'll open this meeting to the public. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Direct all comments at me, the chair of the meeting, and if you can and are willing, please include your name and address for our records. Meeting is open to the public. Hi, nice shirt. There you go.
I just said model. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Donna Darling. I live at 30294 Gary Avenue in Madison Heights. I am a homeowner. I pay my taxes, and I need to get my glasses.
It's okay. I love the order of prioritization there. Homeowner, pay taxes, and needs to get glasses.
Yeah, in that order. My question for the council is, why are we paying an outside company $1,800 to find a replacement for city manager? My understanding is, the young lady we have, Melissa Marsh, is doing an outstanding job. I have heard from several people who say she is doing an amazing job. My question to you, why look for anything when we have the best? And I put that to you, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir. Mike Sally, 25446 Miracle. When you came in and you noticed there's a adult center newsletter, a couple of months ago when I was here, and I understand that you all get your own, but the reason I brought him is because a couple of months ago when I was here, I said, hey, please, come over to the center and see what we do. Margine's been there, but she kind of has to. The mayor has been there, but he kind of has to. So what I'm saying is, come on out, see what we're about. And that's it.
Thank you.
Your Honor, just as I was going to say, did you forget me, Mike? I'm over there sweating in the mornings. I'm over there sweating in the mornings. But I got to be there, I guess, too, so.
Are there any more public comments? Okay. I will close this meeting to the public. We'll move on to communications. There are none, so that brings us to Reports D1, the Hit Free Zone Resolution. Ms. Marsh?
At the wish of Councilman Saltis and Mayor Hartwell, the City Council is being asked to consider the approval of a no-hit resolution to designate city-owned properties and facilities as hit-free zone areas, and urge city staff to install signage at city-owned properties and facilities. I can read the resolution as well.
Yes, please.
Whereas the city of Madison Heights supports safe, healthy, and nurturing family relationships and environments throughout the life of all citizens in our community, and whereas the use of corporal punishment to discipline children has proven to result in negative outcomes associated with such punishments, putting children at risk of developing increased aggression, antisocial behavior, and mental health problems, as well as physical injury, and whereas ending violence against children can reduce the risk that any given child will suffer child abuse or engage in criminal conduct as an adult or juvenile, and whereas the council believes that as a community committed to the well-being of children, the city can help prevent and lessen lifelong consequences of violence by promoting the well-being of children and adults in our homes and community, and whereas the council designated all city-owned property and facilities as hit-free zones, which are areas in which no adult shall hit other adults, no adult shall hit a child, no child shall hit an adult, and no child shall hit another child, and whereas the purpose of the hit-free zone area is to create and reinforce an environment of safety and comfort for all people who come in or on city-owned property or facilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Madison Heights that city-owned property and facilities shall be designated as hit-free zone areas, and urge the city staff to install signage at city-owned properties and facilities of hit-free zones, and promote throughout the community informational brochures and local and online programs that are available to parents on alternative discipline methods.
Okay, so what's the wish of council on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Saltis.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the resolution as is for the facilities, excuse me, city property and facilities as a hit-free zone, and urge the city staff to install signage on city-owned property and facilities as a hit-free zone. And by the way, there was no time for put into it by personnel, city personnel, because this was exactly taken from another example of a resolution.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Saltis on the hit-free zone resolution to adopt it as printed. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Saltis, seconded by Councilwoman Scott. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor Protem, have we done any kind of an analogy or estimate of the cost of putting in the signage, and do we have any designated places other than the city public buildings?
I would assume that that would be through the city's sign shop, but I'll let Ms. Marsh answer.
The resolution is only for city-owned properties and parks, so we had discussed, they've actually sent a sample of a sticker that the sign shop then would make to stick like in the doors, like on the side, I guess, near where the hours are. But I do not have a cost for that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to add to Councilwoman's question, I mean, it could be smaller, doesn't have to be real large, and doesn't have to be sticking out of the ground like a stop sign. We can put it on a door, glass, or so forth.
All right.
Is that something that we could get in a report following the meeting, what those costs are?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other comments from council on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Saltis.
Part of the reason I was thinking about this was, you know, there's different research out there. In fact, there's plenty of research, once you look for it, talking about spanking and child, the effects of it later on. I mean, I'm not going to necessarily get into that, but it's available out there. But, so CNG put a link out on Facebook, I don't have Facebook, but there was there, and so there was some interesting, according to what I was told, there was a hundred or so comments on this issue, which that was part of the reason, is to spark some conversation and discussion on this topic. I think it's worthwhile. I'd just like to read a few good remarks that were put out. This gentleman here said, "There are far better ways to assert control and discipline with children without causing the psychological scarring and instilling the belief that might makes right." There's another gentleman here said, "A child spanked learns that when their parents want to correct their negative behavior, that hitting them works. Why would a child not then apply the same logic to correcting other people? How do you expect a child to know exactly how hard, when, and who they should hit? How do you teach a child that violence doesn't solve problems when parents use it to solve problems?" There's another quote here. This one's a good one. So this is from, it must be an early childhood professional. She said, "From an early childhood professional's perspective, it isn't spanking that needs to happen for children to behave. Redirection when toddlers, their logical consequences when older. Also, parents need to be parents. A good example is spend time with your children. If you need help, ask for help instead of hitting your child. It's abuse no matter which way you look at it." And this gentleman here said, "I'm going to hit you every time you do something wrong, but you should never hit anyone else. That's illogical. Violence begets violence." So that's just a few examples of what was on Facebook, and I think it's important, I think it's important that we send a message. You know, as the article in the paper said, that, you know, we're not trying to tell parents how to parent, but we're encouraging that they rethink about spanking a child, especially on city property. So that's all. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from council?
I have a question, so.
Council Grabstein.
It also says in this resolution that children can't hit parents, and children can't hit children, and adults can't hit adults. So it's a no-one could hit anyone, not just a parent hitting a child. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, and if I'm there at the park with my child and I spank them, what are the repercussions for that?
Your Honor, so obviously, this is not an ordinance. It's just a resolution that suggests that we don't do that on city property. I mean, it's more of an honor system type thing.
That's some of the feedback that I received was, why do this? Because it doesn't affect any change? You know, I mean, I do understand the purpose of creating a dialogue, but child abuse laws are already on the system, and this doesn't change any of those. So I think to the point that Councilor Grabstein, you were bringing up, is it's not like we're writing a ticket or arresting somebody that doesn't abide by this at the parks, but I think the point that you're making, Councilman Saltis, is that having the sign then sparks a discussion, which may change that mindset.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor. And my hope is that they'll rethink it. It'll become, you know, where it's a, the signs will give an indication and communicate, and then I think, you know, they might, my hope is that they would reconsider before they're doing it. And we don't necessarily, the point is that we don't necessarily need an ordinance or a law, because the law states that you can use reasonable force, physical punishment on your child, which I don't agree with, but that's still the law. So we can't have, we can't go against that law, and we're not looking, I'm not looking necessarily for child abuse on the city property. It's like the article where this researcher said that spanking does lead to other things, and that's why I was hoping that this would discourage someone before they reacted, instead of thinking about what they're doing.
Sorry, I have another question, and I apologize if it was in the notes. What does the sign say? Does it say no-hit or no-spanking, or just?
Mr. Mayor? There's various things. In fact, there's an organization at No-Hit Zone, and that's part of the reason where I got this from. They make their own signs, we can use theirs, or we can, you know, create our internally. It's got pictures of kids, or, you know, silhouettes, and it just says No-Hit Zone. It's pretty simple. There, if you look and do some research, there's a lot of hospitals that are starting to do that now, especially the children's hospitals, where the inside the hospital, it's a no-free-hit zone, so, and some other institutions are doing as well.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Council Grabstein?
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to do this, but I'm wondering if we could get feedback from the people who are here, not just from Facebook. If there's anyone here who would like to comment on this? Am I allowed to do that? If I'm not, that's fine.
We can open it back up to the public if somebody wants to speak.
And if not, that's fine. I'm just curious. We have a few people.
I know we have a hundred people out in the gallery right now, but.
If you would like to come to the podium, you do not need to, but we're hearing comments from Facebook, but I'm just curious if there's anyone in the audience who had a comment.
My personal belief is, I have two children, I have four grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. My daughter-in-law uses a timeout chair, which seems to work well. Both of my kids I spanked. They're great kids, they're great parents. I think that maybe, maybe I'm off-base here, but I think that disciplining a child properly, there's nothing wrong with it. But what you're saying is you cannot discipline a child on public property, is that right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
We're just suggesting it. We're hoping.
Mr. Saltis, do you have children?
Yes, of course, yeah.
Do you? Okay.
Please, please direct your comments to me.
Pardon me?
Please direct your comments to me as the chair, instead of an individual councilman.
Okay, all right. I just wondered if, that's my feeling. I don't, I don't think my children were damaged at all by being spanked. I mean, I didn't beat them with the belt or anything, but if they did something wrong, they were punished.
I appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Does any other member of council have any comments on this issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Corbett.
Yeah, you knew I couldn't resist, but. I've talked off and on over the last couple of weeks with Councilman Saltis on this. I, now, I'm not going to sit here and say I'm going to vote for it and then not, and I won't do that, but my only concern, and it's more, it's two things. I just don't want the council to start coming off as preachy, as soapboxy. I don't, I'm not the monitoring of public morals or how you raise a kid. I mean, now, in all honesty, I, you know, and it may be a mellowing of age, I have found the timeout technique to be a lot easier and less aggravating, but I was also raised in a different time, but it was a different time. It was 50 years ago, or 60, or whatever the hell it was now, but it was a while back down the road. And I think things are changing. I think that, as I look at my daughters and sons, how they approach it is different than how my mother raised me. We seem to have been fairly successful using a variety of models. I guess every kid is different, to tell you the truth. I think that's, you know, you know, you could scare me. My brother, you had to get a little more aggressive to get his attention. So, I mean, I'll support the resolution. I understand that the councilman is looking to raise the level of conversation. I would just, and I'm really echoing other people at this table, I would just caution us about continuing to stray from our mission. Our mission is defined in the Charter of the Community. It's what we're here for. We're here to provide public safety, so maybe that's the entree to doing this. But public safety and the growth of the community, its cultural interests, and its recreational facility, but I just, I think the last meeting or the meeting before it was the Mayor Protem who was a little concerned on something, and tonight it's me. I just think we need to stay in our, to stay in our bailiwick, and so I'll support it. I'll give it the benefit of the doubt, but I just would warn us about doing this too much in the future. So, that's all, sir. Thank you.
Bailiwick, that's an interesting word choice.
Yeah, I know.
Very, very modern. Is there any other, any other comments from council? I have a, I have a question, I suppose. The motion, as was stated, is to adopt as printed this resolution, and that is encouraging the staff, or urging them to install signage. The signage itself is not, I guess, determined in this motion that would be handled after this meeting, by recommendation of staff? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and depending on what the budget for that item is, would that need to come back here, or is that going to be minimal and handled just?
I anticipate it's going to be minimal, so typically $10,000 comes back to the council, and if it's that much, I'll probably have a heart attack, so.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't want this to pay anywhere near that amount.
Yes, Councilman Saltis?
And just to guesstimate, how many, how many signs do you think?
How many signs do I think?
Well, the city manager, excuse me.
Probably about 10, at least when we put on all the city facilities.
Right.
If you're in the facilities, and then if you're in the parks, it's even different, and then those, those signs would need to be more weatherproof, correct?
Yeah.
Do you need, do you need direction from council in this meeting on the signage, as to what an appropriate amount would be? I know the motion is fairly vague on that.
No, I think I can figure that out.
Okay.
I think I'm good.
Because I know, Councilwoman Scott, you had addressed an issue with the cost of the signage, right?
Yes. I would just, it's not that I object to the proposal or suggestion, it's just that I want to make sure that every time we spend money, we spend it on behalf of the council and the people we represent. I think it's a good thing to bring up, and keep in mind that, remember, this is to create awareness for violence, and I think it's a good start. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Would staff be willing to give council the number prior to us printing signs, just so that way we have an awareness of the cost?
Yes, yeah, that's not a problem.
Thank you. All right, any, any final comments on this issue from council? Okay. The motion on the table from Councilman Saltis, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, is to approve and adopt the resolution, the Hit Free Zone Resolution as printed. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no.
No.
Motion carries five to one. Okay. There are no items for future public hearings, and there are no bid awards and purchases, so we can move on to G ordinances. We have an ordinance reading, a second reading for ordinance 2127.
Provided for council's consideration is a proposed ordinance that amends the city's current code of ordinances regarding recycling and waste disposal. At the June 25th, 2018 council meeting, council approved a five-year extension with our current solid waste contractor, Green for Life Environmental. The contract extension provides for the pickup and disposal of larger carts and recycling and trash. To further accomplish this objective, our current ordinances regarding the allowable sizes of carts has been amended to correspond with the increased sizes that will be allowed under the new terms of the contract extension. Therefore, attached for council's consideration is a proposed ordinance amendment that amends our current recycling and waste disposal provisions to align with the increased sizes of carts under the contract extension. Next, the proposed ordinance updates the language of the allowable sizes and weights of containers to provide for a more living ordinance that will automatically change with and match any existing or future changes in recyclable and waste collection services and contracts. Due to the constantly changing technology in this area, collection methods, approved containers, and approved collectible materials may change regularly. By referencing the authorized and approved containers and material in the contract in effect and approved by council, each time a collection method or change is authorized, or a container size approved occurs with our current and future waste hauler contract, council will not have to amend the ordinance to match what has been approved by council in the current or any future waste hauling contract. Lastly, as per the direction of council in drafting the proposed amendment, the city attorney's office, staff and I reviewed Chapter 14 in its entirety regarding recycling and waste disposal for other possible updates and revisions. In conducting this review, in addition to minor language updates, Section 1410 regarding outdoor burning was properly crossed reference to the International Fire Code that more comprehensively regulates all outdoor burning, which was approved by council on or about August 22nd of 2016. Staff and I recommend council approve ordinance 2127 on this second and final reading.
There was a mouthful. Thank you. What's the wish of council on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Grabstein.
I move that council adopt on second reading the proposed ordinance 2127, the recycling and waste disposal ordinance.
Do we have any support?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, support? Okay, so we have a motion by Councilor Grabstein, and a second by Councilman Corbett, to adopt the proposed ordinance amendment 2127 on second reading. Any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a thank you to the acting manager and the legal folks for the work they did on it. I thought it was, it was a nice cleanup and very informative, the changes. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so we have the motion on the table to adopt the ordinance 2127 on second reading, by Councilor Grabstein, seconded by Councilman Corbett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. So there are no, there's no one to finish business, so that takes us to the meetings. We have two. We have a special council meeting minutes of September 10th, and then the regular council meeting of September 10th. What's the wish for council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council approve the minutes as printed for the special meeting of the 10th of September.
of the 10th of September.
Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Scott? Motion on the table by Councilwoman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott to approve the minutes of the special council meeting as printed. Any comments from council? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, and so now the second one, the regular council meeting of September 10th.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Corbett?
I move that the regular meeting minutes of September the 10th be approved as printed.
Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Promin?
Support? Okay. Motion on the table to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting as printed of September 10th, and that's a motion by Councilwoman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Geddings. Corbett, with just one more, anyone to have the hat trick. We needed another meeting that day.
Oh, I think we'll all survive, but thank you.
And any, any comments from council? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We, I don't believe we have any pressing board appointments, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so then we can move right into closing comments. We'll start at the corner with Councilwoman Corbett.
Thank you. Just a few items, actually, this evening. First of all, I wanted to take note of the council received a couple of weeks ago. If you recall, we had the voucher, the Water Park voucher plan that worked this past summer. And it was a, the second year we've done this, and there was some tweaking that was done to the program in terms of allowable tickets and so on. I was, and I think I speak for pretty much everybody involved in the project, just incredibly impressed and very happy with the results. I think, and I mean, there was the adjustment thing of how many tickets per family, you know, how many at discount if necessary. There were some various statistics in there, but the one that stuck out to me, and the one that I think brought it home and said we probably have found the right numbers, was we had between a one-half and a one-third increase in the number of families who took advantage of the program this year. I know there were some concerns that some folks would be left out. And the problem is with a program like this, not to, not to go too deep into the weeds, it's a balancing act. There is no perfect system. If you go so many per family a maximum, if you increase it, then somebody down the line's going to be left out. On the other hand, if you get too restrictive, then larger families are going to be disadvantaged. There is no perfect system. But I think the numbers and the structure that the recreation department implemented were excellent. And I just want to thank the council and the staff for some really good work on that. I know the, we had a Parks and Rec Board meeting here recently, and they were, they were very grateful. On that, I just wanted to make mention, and council will be receiving a request, a recommendation in, well, either the next meeting or the meeting after that, for the installation of the handicap swings, specifically the ones involving the wheelchair bound. And there will be a proposal to install in two. The committee kicked it around and decided to recommend Rosie's and the main one here at City Hall, the Civic Center Park, as the place to initial it, so that children who are in wheelchairs can actually take advantage of the, you know, some of the recreation stuff. That's in addition to some work we're doing with the ones for younger children, where you can strap them into, I don't know, cows, elephants, pigs, whatever the, whatever the design of the swing is, but it's very cool. So, you know, our goal is to try and make sure that no kid gets left out, and we're very happy with the way that's proceeding. Just a reminder, I do office hours at 1:00 to 3:00 on Fridays at the library. If anybody has a complaint or concern, you're welcome to come in. I'm usually just in that one conference room that is right off of the, the main lobby there, and you bring up anything, if it's that important, I suppose we could walk over to City Hall and visit whoever it is, whatever department you've got a problem with, but we're there and we're open for business all the time. I know for myself, at any other time or any member of the council, if you have a complaint or concern, or an opinion, or an idea, contact the city manager's office, and they'll put you in contact with the mayor or the council member of your choice. Last but not least, last week I had an opportunity to do a ride-along with one of the officers for the, who's been working on, well, in this particular case, the hotel surveillance for prostitution and drugs and human trafficking. And a very impressive officer. If he, I believe he is representative of the department, and it's just a, it was a real, real source of pride to me to know that he's on our side. And, and I think that he makes a persuasive case for the use of undercover officers and the funding for the same within our community and in our budget. So, I know we have a proposal coming up shortly that I think is worthy of very careful consideration. It's like anything else, we've got a lot of, a lot of claims on money, and it's only going to start to get louder as we start to go through the process, but, but they do good work, they do valuable work, they do important work, and it was an interesting experience, and I'm glad I took a chance. For the other council members who haven't, I would recommend you to go along. It's, it's very educational, so, and you can begin to learn to see their methods and their techniques, so. That's all I have this evening, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Geddings, anything tonight?
Just a reminder, the fire department will be doing an open house a week from this Saturday at fire station number two, Greg, from 10:00 to 2:00, and the community's invited, and it's always a good time for everyone involved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, anything tonight?
Yes, just one thing, Your Honor, I'd like to mention. I neglected to mention this a month or so ago, but the Sherman and Sherman Rangers had an undefeated championship season. And I, we've sponsored sports teams in Madison Heights every year for decades, but on this particular occasion, I got a voicemail message from the coach of the Sherman and Sherman Rangers inviting me as the sponsor or owner of the team to the team championship dinner. And I, I, and the dinner was at Augie's, and I decided that I was going to attend because I was so touched by the invitation. And I got to meet these eight and nine-year-old players, I got to meet the coaches, I got to meet many of the parents, and, and it just, it just really made me feel great to know that I had a small hand in, in being associated with a, with an undefeated championship team. And I know these kids, having coached and having played sports for many years, are going to remember the great times they had together. You know, the winning the championship and being undefeated, that's fantastic, but it's the relationship these kids have with each other and the coaches and the parents that makes it so special. And I, I was just really appreciative that the coach reached out to me to make me part of it. So it was great. Thank you.
Could I just ask one question? Are you more like an Al Davis as an owner, or?
He's Mark Cuban.
Mark Cuban, more of a Mark Cuban, okay.
All right. Ms. Marsh, anything tonight?
Just one thing. We started our Citizens Academy last Wednesday, and we had a really good turnout for that. We've had 21 people sign up out of 25 spots, and I'm really grateful for those people that came out. I thought it was a great meeting, and we're going to have seven more classes. It's for people who have signed up. So if anybody's interested, we'll be hopefully doing this again next year, so keep an eye out for that. And also, the Madison Heights Hazel Park Chamber Commerce is going to be having their annual dinner and gala on October the 4th from 6:00 to 9:00 at Club Venetian. So if you're interested, it's always a fun time, lots of things for raffles, so that's it.
Awesome. Ms. Prince, anything tonight?
Yes.
I hear there's an election coming up.
There is an election coming up, thank you. Yes, I just wanted to remind everybody that the close of registration for the upcoming November 6th election is October 9th. You can register at the city clerk's office, you can also go online and do an online application. However, if you do that, you must vote in person the first time, or you need to come into the city clerk's office prior to the election to verify your identity. The other thing is, we just got our ballots, we're in the process of testing them. We should be sending them out the first week of October, if you're looking for one, if you already sent in an application. And I also encourage you to go online. They're not on there yet, but I'm hoping to have them on by the end of the day tomorrow. All the ballots will be online for you to look at ahead of time. There are no straight-ticket party, straight-ticket voting this year, so it might take a little longer in the, the voting booth, so if you can get an opportunity to look at those ahead of time, might save yourself some time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Grastine, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes, I would like to applaud our senior citizens who have visited us tonight, all in their green Madison Heights shirts. We're very pleased to see them wearing it. And they have submitted a very comprehensive, acceptable report on, from the advisory board on what they are looking for and what they will need at the center. I want to remind you that they have also always taken care of a lot of the funding that they have there in their escrow account. They donated $2,000 to our parade committee the last two years for, so we could have our Memorial Day parade. But they are looking for some of the items, and they are to return the part-time assistant position to full-time, a lot more hours for our part-time drivers, and install emergency exit in the front office area. And so I think they're all three very well-needed items, and I think we really need to consider their wishes and, and give them an advantage of being here. After all, seniors are the highest population in the city, and they represent a lot of our people. And I know that they vote all the time, so I applaud them for doing that, and I hope you can teach the younger ones a lesson by being there at the voting booths. I also wanted to announce that they're having their apple pie day on Monday, October 8th, and they will have delicious apple pies in regular, sugar-free, and Dutch, and they will be making them there, and you can order it by October 5th. It's only $12, but I know they're delicious. And new this year, they're going to have a little sample box, if you don't want to get the whole pie, or if you want to get in addition to it, they have a little sample box of sweets that you can purchase as well. So I think it's going to be a fun event, and I applaud them for, for making sure that we all have the proper eating things for Thanksgiving and for Halloween area. Also, the Madison Heights Animal Shelter are having a Halloween pet treat, trick-or-treat, treat, actually, it's treat or treats. On Saturday, October 20th, they are encouraging parents to bring their children, the children and the pets will be dressed up, and they will give little snacks to the, to the, to the pets. And there will be also a bake sale, a raffle, and a rummage sale as well. And that's from 11:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, October 20th. And that will be at the animal shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. And those shirts, the T-shirts that were modeled by the Board for Active Adults Center are available for sale for $20 apiece, with proceeds funding arts and cultural programming in the city, so. Just wanted to put that shameless plug out there. Anybody watching at home, come into City Hall, pick up a T-shirt, they look awesome. Well, thank you for modeling them. Councilman Saltis, anything tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I saw Councilman Corbett's face on that most-wanted list. Maybe I could have mistaken.
That's why he was in the police car for the day.
Yeah, I didn't say if I was in the front or back seat.
Yeah, that's right, you're in the back. On a serious note, I appreciate the council's support on the hit-free zone. It was important to me, I think it's important in general, so I appreciate the support. You know, not too long ago, in Lexington, we were up there swimming and stuff, and then we were eating dinner, and I happened to see in the corner of my eye, there was a father chasing after his son, must have been three or four, and once he caught him, he spanked him. And so my younger son saw that, and he said, "Well, Dad, are you going to say something?" So I sat and thought about it. I think by the time I would have walked over there, he would have been all over and done and walked down the street, but I probably should have said something. I understand why he did it, but I didn't necessarily agree with it. To me, it's a different, it's a matter of thinking differently than, than some of the older ways. I think once it happens out in public, it becomes a different issue. I think we all, as citizens, have a moral obligation to say something. I feel our mission as a council should be in part for speaking out those who cannot speak out for themselves. You know, for example, a few years ago, we approved a resolution that I wrote to join the Silver, join the Silver Key Coalition, and that was the coalition to support seniors to stay in their home as long as possible. You know, that was part of our mission. I thought, I thought it was a worthwhile thing. We were the first city to do that, I believe the only city. In this regard, the no-hit zone, I was looking online, and I think there was one other city that's done this. So, you know, I, I appreciate everybody's opinion, but it, I think it's a good thing. And it's, and it's also based on evidence, research evidence, it's sound evidence, so I, you know, I implore you to read that. All you have to do is Google it, and it comes up pretty quickly. If not, you can always just ask me to. Thank you.
Okay, so only a few things from me tonight. The first is a comment regarding the ordinance we just passed. I mean, that's relating to the new contract that we signed with GFL. And I have been getting a lot of complaints still about our trash provider. I mean, this was something that we talked about when the contract was up for renewal. It was the reason why I was opposed to that renewal. They had had a period of time with terrible service, and, you know, that, that has continued. I mean, there have been comments on social media, I've received emails. I'm, I'm just hoping that they can turn that around. You know, we're locked in now for an additional five years under the contract, and so I would just urge staff to reach out to representatives from GFL, make sure that there is timely pickup of trash, make sure that the trash containers aren't getting broken. There's a lot of people commenting about those containers getting broken as they're tossed around, and I, I just want to make sure that, I mean, I, I said at the time, and I will say today, I want that to be something I was wrong on. I want to be wrong, I want to make, I want this to be the best deal for the city with the best service we could possibly get. I want to be wrong. Right now, then, I think there needs to be a little bit of intervention, because we have not seen the level of service that I would expect from a contractor of the city doing that service for our residents. And so if we could reach out on the staff level, I don't think a report is necessary, but I think just letting them know that that is, that is public feedback, and I just want them to have a little bit of awareness. They represent our city every time that they pick up a trash can, and I want to make sure that as representatives of our city, they're behaving and acting in the same manner that our city staff does, and they're held to that same standard. On a more, I guess, lighter and happier note, I also want to talk about, we've heard some requests from council members and the discussion of these priorities and financial priorities. We're undergoing right now the long-term strategic planning, which has replaced the goals process from council, which we rejuvenated, I think, three, four years ago. And so this is the new version of that, which I think is incredibly better, where we're trying to tackle a long-term perspective of what do we want to do over the next few years with limited budget constraints. And so a lot of the conversation that you've heard tonight in closing comments, a few things have been mentioned for items that are on the table that members of council are discussing. I would urge those in the public here and those watching at home to reach out to us individually, send an email to city staff. If there's something important that you think that we as a city need to do, need to invest in, please let us know. This is a great time for that, as we're undergoing that strategic planning. So please let us know, speak out. You can come to a meeting, you can shoot us an email, either way, it'll get heard. That's all I have tonight. Any final comments before we close the meeting?
Just one item in the dovetail, something that you had mentioned.
You can jump in, Councilwoman Corbett.
But I want to be clear, there's, there's a misunderstanding out there, and I'm not looking to belabor it, that somehow we're locked in on that GFL to belabor it, that somehow we're locked in on that GFL contract without exception or without reason. For cause, we can move out of that contract, and like yourself, I think a number of us have gotten some complaints. Now, let me say, I evaluate some of them with a mixed bag, some seem to be, you're never going to keep everybody happy, but I agree with you, I think the level's a little higher. But don't say that we can't, we're locked in. We can do what we have to do on behalf of the residents at any point. Now, we can't just haphazardly walk in and out of contracts. I don't, I think we're better than that, but if there's a problem and it doesn't get corrected, then we're going to deal with it, right? So, okay, that's all, sir. Thank you.
No, appreciate it. We're just bringing some attention to it, and hopefully we can get it corrected, so. Any final comments from council? All right, well, the time is 8:22, and with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.